Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Bismarck Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is May 28th, and we'll adjourn, or we'll open our meeting this evening with approval in the minutes. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wagen, a motion from Commissioner Zent. Any discussion? Not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wagen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, thank you.
Chair Schwartz, can we take attendance?
Pardon me?
Attendance?
Oh.
We didn't take attendance. Okay.
Sarah, would you please call roll? Let me, first of all, I'm getting out of motion here.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Yeah, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Certainly. Thank you. Commissioner Bitner, Commissioner Field, Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Lukens?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Shell?
Here.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Here.
Commissioner Seavock?
Here.
Commissioner Wagen?
Here.
Commissioner Zent?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here. With that, we'll proceed. Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda this evening, and there are, I believe, five items on our consent agenda. The first being Crews subdivision, a preliminary plat, and a zoning map amendment. Staff recommends both, a call for, a call for public hearing on both. The second is Voss subdivision, and the request there is for a preliminary plat, and staff recommends a call for public hearing. The third, item number C, is a, for municipal fourth edition, first replat, block one, lots two and three, and this is a request for a PUD amendment. Staff recommends a call for public hearing. Item number D is dimensional standards in public, in P, public zoning districts, and this is a zoning ordinance text amendment. Staff's recommendation, again, is a call for public hearing. And the final, item E, in the consent agenda, is for Lincoln Township, Section 22, southwest quarter, and this is a request for a zoning map amendment, and again, staff's recommendation is a call for public hearing. Commissioners, what are your wishes for the consent agenda this evening?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wagen to approve.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Zent. Any additional discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda this evening, and we will begin with item number A, Shafer Heights, block two, lot one, less lot 1A and lot two, less lot 2A, and Jenny is going to provide us with staff report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Schwartz. Commissioners, Bismarck State College is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from a conditional RT residential zoning district to the P public zoning district on lot one, less 1A, and lot two, less lot 2A, block two, Shafer Heights. This request is located in central Bismarck, west of Ward Road, between College Drive and Edwards Avenue, and consists of thirteen point four, one, excuse me, one-four acres. You considered this request and called for a public hearing at your meeting on April 23rd. The existing conditional RT residential zoning district allows for only office uses. If approved as proposed, Bismarck State College would remodel the existing BSC Health Science Building for student dormitories and classroom space. Adjacent land uses include office uses to the north across College Drive, Tomahleary Golf Course; to the east across Ward Road; single-family residential uses to the south across Edwards Avenue; and institutional uses associated with Bismarck State College to the west. The public was notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on May 17th and 23rd, and 29 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on May 17th. We have received phone calls, just a couple, regarding the proposed amendment, neither for or against, just curious, and to my knowledge, we have not received any written comments. This request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances and State Law, and as a result of all the findings contained in the staff report, staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with our comprehensive plan, code of ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the conditional RT residential zoning district to the P public zoning district on lot one, less lot 1A, and lot two, less lot 2A, block two, Shafer Heights. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny. I'm not seeing or hearing any, Jenny. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will open up the public hearing for this agenda item. Would either the quester or representative be available to speak?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Landon Amler, Swenson Hagan Engineering, representing BSC in this. Yeah, just to add to what Jenny was speaking about, this is just one of those projects that had come along where it was probably assumed at some point that you could convert this into dorms without an issue, but run into a zoning issue. We need to get that going tonight, so ask for the zoning change over to P public so that we can construct those dorms, or remodel for dorms, and possibly some classrooms as well. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Landon. Landon, is the building going to basically stay the same, on the outside, single story?
Chair Schwartz, for now, there certainly could be additions and changes later on, but as far as we know, as of today, the building is intended to stay the same.
Okay, thank you. Again, any other questions? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Thank you, Landon. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I am not seeing or hearing any. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jenny, do you have any additional comments?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. With that, commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendan, amendment. Staff's recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Zent.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagen?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item B under the regular agenda, which is Daybreak Second Edition, block one, lot one, and block six, lot one. And once again, Jenny is going to provide us with staff report.
Thank you, Chairman Schwartz. Commissioners, Bismarck North Developers LLC is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the RT residential zoning district to the conditional CG commercial zoning district on lot one, block one, and lot one, block six, Daybreak Second Edition. This request is located in north Bismarck, north of 57th Avenue northeast and west of Ridgeland Drive, along the north and south side of 64th Avenue northeast. It consists of thirteen point five acres in total. If approved as proposed, the conditional CG commercial zoning district would allow for a mix of commercial uses, including multifamily residential. Multifamily development is permitted within the underlying RT residential zoning district. However, the request was made in order to allow a greater density and building heights for a proposed multifamily development. A zoning map amendment to the CG commercial zoning district and a separate future land use plan amendment from the neighborhood mixed-use land use designation to the community mixed-use land designation were submitted and reviewed by staff. However, after additional review of the request, city staff expressed concern with the CG commercial zoning district, in particular that some of the commercial uses allowed in this district may not be appropriate for this area, noting that the uses associated with the CG commercial zoning district may be better located east of Ridgeland Drive, which is identified as community mixed use in our land use plan. The applicant concurred and has agreed to a conditional CG commercial zoning district. The uses permitted within this district align with the existing neighborhood mixed-use land use designation for this area, and an amendment to the community mixed-use land use designation is no longer required and has been withdrawn by the applicant. Adjacent land uses include vacant agricultural zone property to the north and west, and vacant CG zone property and egg zone property to the east across Ridgeland Drive, and St. Mary's Central High School to the south. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on May 16th and 23rd, and six postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on May 17th. To my knowledge, we have not received any written comments. This request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law. As a result of all the findings contained in the staff report, staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the RT residential zoning district to the conditional CG commercial zoning district on lot one, block one, and lot one, block six, Daybreak Second Edition. Do you have questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny. Commissioner Shell?
Jenny, could you maybe summarize the differences between the RT zoning that is there today and what the conditional CG would have in terms of what additional uses potentially are available there, or led you to, or what led the discussion on staff on to which uses would be restricted from the CG?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Shell. The uses that we have asked to be restricted, they're included in your packet as part of the ordinance, but certainly a single-family and two-family dwelling wouldn't make sense in this location. That is allowed in the CG to commercial zoning district in conjunction with a commercial use. Retail group B, I guess I call it things for your things, stores that you'd have to take away the goods with, from, with a truck, uses such as a filling station, railroad bus passenger station, commercial parking lot, things that would be more generated to a destination area where it wouldn't be necessarily a development that would be for the immediate neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, any additional questions for Jenny? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Jenny. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, this is a public hearing. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Is either the quester or representative here?
Good evening, Chair Schwartz, Commissioners. So, the reason for coming forward with the zoning change is we're currently under development of design for an apartment complex on lot one, block six, which is on the north side of 64th and on the west side of Ridgeland, and that would be a four-story building in underground or at-grade parking structure underneath that goes into the ground, but then three stories of apartments above that. And so, what we're finding out with the lot is, although there is some grade there, that once you start stacking up those structures in that roof line, we're getting above the maximum height limits with the other zonings. So, we're kind of in that 75-foot range for heights, and so we thought best to come in with a conditional change and restrict some of the other uses. We thought bringing in the lot to the south side, if something didn't pan out, it just gives them some opportunities, but it also gave them the opportunity to have that additional height restriction. So, we're currently working on kind of the phase one design aspect of a two-phase project on that lot to the north. So, with that, I can answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Patrician?
All right.
I'm not seeing or hearing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody stepping up to the podium, so with that, I am going to close the public hearing. Jenny, any additional comments?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. With that, commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment. Staff is recommending approval. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wagen.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Zent. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wagen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Ah, there he is. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we will move on to item C in our regular agenda, Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, and I believe Isaac is going to provide us with staff report this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. So, this next regular agenda item comes to us from Silver Ranch 18 LLP, who are requesting a number of things which we'll all see together here, including a major subdivision final plat titled Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, along with an accompanying zoning map amendment from the A agricultural zoning district to the RM 20 residential zoning district, as well as another portion going from A agricultural to a PUD or planned unit development. There's also, as you can see there on the screens before you, the, the yellow outline is the area of the final plat as well as the zoning map amendment. The two dashed blue lines there are an annexation request. In the staff report, you'll see two annexation project titles. That's more so for staff's record-keeping, but they are the same request in the annexation ordinance. That was the draft version in your staff report as well. So, this project is located kind of on the east, northeast side of Bismarck, north of 43rd Avenue, east of Silver Boulevard, and along future extensions of Davies Drive and Halverson Avenue, as you can see there on the screens. This proposed subdivision and zoning map amendment portion of the project would consist of 136 lots in six blocks, with an area of about 42.7 acres, give or take. The annexation portion of the project is approximately 14.8 acres. I will point out a typo in the staff report. On the front page of the staff report, it says the annexation is about 12.4, I believe, acres there. That is incorrect. The annexation ordinance does have the correct 14.8 acres. So then, the zoning map amendment consists of two parts, as I mentioned, one going from the A agricultural to the RM 20. That is for lots one, block one, and lot two, block two, Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, as you can see on the northwest side of the image on the screen there. And then the, the rest of it, of Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, would be that PUD or planned unit development. The annexation request, as you can see, part of it here, comes in two parts. The first part, this one here, is lots 23 through 27, block three, as well as lot 44, block four, and lots 32 through 34, block five, Silver Ranch Fifth Edition. And if we go to the other annexation there, that portion is lots 13 through 15, block eight, lot one, block 14, Silver Ranch Third Edition, as well as lot one, block one, and lot one, block two, Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, and of course, all the adjoining rights away of the aforementioned lots and blocks. So, this land, generally speaking, is surrounded on the northeast and south side by undeveloped or agricultural land, and on the west side there is other portions of the Silver Ranch neighborhood, so generally speaking, residential in nature, with some parks and things like that as well. The plat area is identified in the future land use plan as urban neighborhood and parks and open space, depending on the exact location, and these areas are generally described as places for quiet enjoyment of home life, and areas kept largely in a natural state, providing various important functions for the community, respectively, for those two different designations. The public was duly notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on May 16th and 23rd, and 12 postcards were mailed to owners of nearby properties on May 17th. To my knowledge, staff has not received any formal written comments regarding this request prior to this hearing. Staff did receive one inquiry about asking some additional questions, asking for information, but this did not result in a formal comment, as far as I'm aware. So, as a cumulative result of all the findings contained in the staff report, city of Bismarck staff find that the proposed major subdivision final plat and accompanying zoning map amendment and annexations will not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and that they are generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the major subdivision final plat titled Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, as well as approval of the accompanying zoning map amendments from the A agricultural district to the RM 20 residential district on lot one, block one, and lot one, block two, Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, and from the A agricultural to a PUD for the remaining lots and blocks of Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, as well as approval of the parts of Silver Ranch Third and Silver Ranch Fifth Edition described in the draft annexation ordinance. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac? Commissioner Shell?
Isaac, can you speak to, I guess, the Parks and Rec open space policy and where we're at with that concept as it relates to this development?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Shell, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners. There are ongoing discussions with all, you know, urban subdivision plats between the Parks and Recreation District and the developers. In this particular one, there is a memorandum of understanding between the developer and the Parks and Recreation District, as well as a Parks and Trail master plan. So while some things could still change during the development process, generally speaking, it is my understanding that Park's staff are comfortable with what is being presented so far, so long as they're kept in the loop if things change. Perhaps the applicant or their representative can speak more to that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, any additional questions for Isaac? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Isaac?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and with that, I will open the public hearing, and I see Landon is stepping up as a representative.
Thank you again, Chair Schwartz. Yes, Landon Amler, Swenson Hagan Engineering, representing InvestCore in this. Yeah, just to get into a little bit more detail from what Isaac presented, the, the PUD here is a, is a target for 55-plus community. Some of the PUD aspects of it, of course, is we're shrinking down the lot sizes a little bit, really kind of targeting really what the, what the city is, is looking for in their future zoning ordinance. So, these lots are getting a little bit smaller, a little less depth, a little more coverage, really going to allow that for that slab on grade building that people are trying for now, particularly the 55-plus community, where they're, we're eliminating as many stairs as we can. The community itself will be, they have a lot of amenities together. There is one of these lots that will be designated for a community center, pickleball, pool, mail delivery, all that kind of thing, that, that actually will be owned communally. So, the people who own the lots themselves actually will own the community center as well. We are working with Park District, of course. There is that existing park plan, of course. That's kind of a moving target, but there is some designated park area south of here. We're also working with them to sort of expand their trail network, have that within the stormwater ponds, leaving them room to, to have some trails that would work for the public as well, but then for the community as large as well. There's also an area that we have a trail easement through sort of the middle of this area, so that the, the homes that are a little further away will have a little easier access to that community center, along with that community center. You know, typically that would be something that's maybe in a CG or a CA zoning. We're putting into, into this zoning, in particular for, for the landscaping aspect of it. You know, typically when we have a commercial use like that, we're looking for a buffering situation where you're, you're keeping people separate from that use, so they don't really see it, they don't have to hear, but, but in a situation like this, we want it to be more inviting. So, the landscaping aspect of it, we're trying to get rid of, in the sense that people have easier access to it. I can certainly answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Landon? Commissioners Zent?
Yeah, Landon, does, this, when it's completed, this will have two access points, right? In, in and out? One to the west and one to the?
Yes, Commissioners. So, yeah, first phase is a very, very small phase, really the intent is just to get the clubhouse construction started, and only three or four other lots along with that. As we move into phase two, it's likely that that second access point would be coming up on the north part of the thing. It'll attach back into Silver Ranch Third. That's that other part of this annexation that we were asking for tonight, so it'll have some connectivity at that point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Zent. Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Shell?
Landon, can you identify who the owners will be of the stormwater drainage easement parcels that are part of this plat?
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. So, at this point, it still would be the HOA. There are still discussions ongoing with, with the Parks Department to see if they would be willing to take over ownership on them, since there's a possibility that they would be building trails on them. That's still a bit of a moving target at this point, though.
Okay, and maybe a follow-up if you may. Is the HOA specific to Silver Ranch Fifth, or is it the HOA for, for all of Silver Ranch, or Silver Ranch Fifth and Fourth and Third? Can you maybe elaborate on that piece of it, too?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Shell. So, there is obviously an overarching HOA for the Silver Ranch area, because there are some existing stormwater ponds that are owned by, by that group. This would be its own HOA, actually. This is very specific to this area, to this PUD. Wouldn't probably include those two RM lots that are being zoned here, but would just be to these owned R PUD lots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional question for Landis? Landon, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing any. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Isaac, do you have addition, any additional comments?
None at this time. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. So with that, Commissioners, we have a request for a final plat, a zoning map amendment, and two annexation requests. Staff recommendation is to approve all four. What are your wishes?
Motion to, to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Seavock. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wagen?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item D in our regular agenda, Northern Sky Second Edition First replat, and block one, block two, lot one. And I believe Lauren is going to provide us with staff report this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. Willment Development LLC is requesting approval of an annexation on lot one, block two, Northern Sky Second Edition First replat. The project area is located in northwest Bismarck, in the northwest corner of North Washington Street and Ash Cooley Drive on the north side of Wilkinson Place. This annexation request is associated with two special use permits that you can see on your agenda as the next request. And this annexation, or those special use permits would be to allow two drive-throughs in conjunction with restaurants on this lot. In order to connect to municipal services for those proposed uses, the property would need to be annexed. The current annexation request, as you see before you, is only for lot one. The other lots within the subdivision will, is, are not part of the annexation. However, those will be annexed when development of the properties occur, or by February 25th, 2030, as per a development agreement between the city and current property owner, whichever comes first. Staff will note that the applicant would like to adjust the boundaries of this specific annexation request, and has requested that this item be continued in order to facilitate that. Annexations do not typically have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, four, four postcards associated, again, with those special use permits were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on May 17th. Additionally, Hay Creek Township was notified of this request. The public will be notified of this request before it's heard by the city commission, per various ordinance regulations and Centric Code requirements. To my knowledge, staff has not received any formal comments regarding this request. It was evaluated according to standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. The proposed annexation area incorporates lands that are within the urban service, that are within the urban service area boundary, and has been designated as expansion priority two. The city of Bismarck and/or other agencies would be able to provide necessary public services, facilities, and programs to serve any development allowed by the annexation at the time the property is developed. The pro, the area proposed for annexation is clearly contiguous to existing corporate boundaries, with more than 20% considered to be contiguous. I will note that the creation of any new lots within the city of Bismarck is subject to development capital charges for municipal utilities. This annexation request would also trigger the held-in-abeyance costs for the regional stormwater improvements and the construction of North Washington Street. Capital utility charges and any held-in-abeyance costs would be due prior to recordation of the annexation itself. As a result of all findings contained within the staff report, staff find that the proposed annexation would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with comprehensive plan, code of ordinances, and relevant state law. As a result of all findings contained within the staff report, staff recommends continuation of the annexation of lot one, block two, Northern Sky Second Edition First replat. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners? Commissioners, questions for Lauren? I'm not seeing or hearing any Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is, this is a request for an annexation, final consideration, so there is not a public hearing involved. I don't know, Ben, since this is a final, since this is final consideration, there is not a public hearing, correct?
Chair, that's correct. As part of the process for annexation, the public hearing, there is not necessarily a public, there isn't a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, but one will occur at the City Commission.
Okay. So Landon, I don't think you need to, all right. So Commissioner Staff recommends continuing this agenda item. What are your wishes?
Move to continue.
We have a motion to continue from Commissioner Wangan.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Zent. Any discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes, motion is approved. We'll move on to Item E in our regular agenda, which is once again Northern Sky Second Edition First Replat, Block Two, Lot One. And Lauren will once again provide us with staff briefing on this.
Good evening Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. Again, Willment Development LLC is requesting approval of two special use permits to allow drive-throughs in conjunction with restaurants on Lot One, Block Two, Northern Sky Second Edition First Replat. The project area, again, is located in northwest Bismarck in the northwest corner of North Washington Street and Ash Cooley, on the north side of Wilkinson Place. The project area is Zone CG Commercial. Drive-throughs are permitted within the CG Commercial District as a special use with approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Adjacent uses include offices and a convenience store to the north, undeveloped commercial property to the south across Wilkinson Place, additional undeveloped commercial property and Horizon Middle School to the west, and undeveloped commercial property offices and single and two-family residential to the east across North Washington Street. The property has been identified as community mixed use in the future land use plan. The proposed restaurants, a coffee shop and a fast food restaurant, would be located within the same building. Based on the exhibits included in the agenda for this item, coffee shop would be located on the west side of the building, and the fast food restaurant would be located on the east. The proposed uses would require connection to municipal services. In order to connect to municipal services, annexation of the property would be required. The applicant has submitted an annexation petition for this property. However, they have requested additional time for that request in order to adjust the boundaries of the property proposed to be annexed. The legal description associated with that, with the special use permits would be updated to reflect any changes associated with that update to the lot boundary. Hay Creek Township was notified of this request on May 6th. Additionally, the public was duly notified of the request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on May 16th and 23rd, and four postcards were mailed to owners of adjacent properties. Hay Creek, staff have not received a response from Hay Creek Township at this time. Additionally, staff have not received any public comments regarding this request. The request was evaluated according to standards contained within the Comprehensive Plan Code of Ordinances and relevant state law. Based on the documents submitted with regard to the special use permit for a drive-through in conjunction with a coffee shop, all associated requirements would be met. Based on the documents submitted with regard to the special use permit for a drive-through in conjunction with a fast food restaurant, most of the associated requirements would be met. The applicant has requested a waiver from the 12 stacking space requirement to reduce it from 12 spaces to three. According to the applicant, the function of the proposed drive-through is different from a standard drive-through, as the message board identified on the exhibit for this restaurant would not permit ordering. All orders would be phoned in or done via the internet prior to arrival. Staff is supportive of this waiver on the condition that the drive-through is configured as proposed, and all orders would be placed prior to arrival. As a result of all findings contained in the staff report, staff find that the proposed special use permits would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Code of Ordinances and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the two special use permits for a coffee shop and a fast food drive, or fast food restaurant on Lot One, Block Two, Northern Sky Second Edition First Replat, including granting a waiver to reduce the required stacking spaces from 12 to three, with the condition that the special use permits do not become effective until annexation of the property occurs. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren? I'm not seeing or hearing any Lauren, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing and ask either the owner or representative to speak to this agenda item.
Thank you Chair Schwartz again. Yeah, just to add a little bit on to what Lauren had presented to you, we are working with the city right now to break off that piece of land that would fit this particular construction. We've submitted the lot modification to the city, that has to go through its process as well, but we'd be tying the annexation to that. When she spoke about the reduction of the 12 spaces to three, unusual around here a little bit, but there are a couple of places in town that it's already happened, I'm sure you've seen them, where it's simply a pickup window only, there's no ordering kiosk or anything like that, you order ahead and you're just there to pick it up. We've had that approved on some other projects, we're looking just for the same type of use right here. But I can certainly answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Landon. Commissioner Shell.
Landon, the concept that the online ordering only, but there's still a message board for that vehicle as they drive up, can you maybe just explain the function of that message board, what it's there to do or what it's there to not do?
Sure, Commissioner Shell, thanks. Yeah, so typically, you would have that extra board there, it could serve a number of purposes, additional advertising, of course. Occasionally, when you pull up to a space, you know, they don't realize you're there and you need to call in physically, they're having their number of things, like they're a way to contact the interior of the building to say, hey, I'm here to pick up my food. Just a little, basically a backup for any uses there.
Commissioner Shell?
So is that an electronic message board that they could order from? Is that what you're saying?
No, Commissioner, the ordering would not be allowed on there, it would only be for pickup and, like I said, for additional advertising, most likely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Landon? Landon, are you comfortable with the three-stack there? I mean, what could, I'm wondering what happens if the place is a very popular place, and all of a sudden you've got lots of cars lined up out there? Will it end up going out into the street, or?
Yeah, Chair Schwartz, I mean, that's certainly a possibility. They don't typically tend to get that busy around here, there are a couple of spaces around town, if you drive around, take a look, they don't tend to fill up that much. It's not really thought of as a place for a drive-through, it's just really that additional benefit that they have. We wouldn't anticipate that it's going to be backing up into the right of way.
Any contingency for that, if it does happen?
At that point, they will have to make some contingencies.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, additional questions? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Landon, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I am not seeing or hearing any, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Lauren, do you have any additional comments?
No additional comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for two special use permits, and staff recommendation is to approve both. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Schmitz. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to Item Number F in our regular agenda, which is Meadowlark Common Commercial, 11th Edition. And once again, Lauren is going to provide us with staff report.
Good evening again Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. ABJ Holdings LLC is requesting approval of a minor subdivision final plat titled Meadowlark Commercial 11th Edition. The proposed plat is a replat of Lot Two, Block One, Meadowlark Commercial 9th Edition, and would create nine lots. The project area includes 2.9 acres and is located in north-central Bismarck, east of State Street, north of 43rd Avenue Northeast, on the east side of North 19th Street. The project area is surrounded by undeveloped property to the north, south, and east, and a mix of undeveloped commercial and multifamily residential properties to the west. The property has been identified as community mixed use and parks and open space in the future land use plan. The community mixed use areas are places of commerce, employment, and residence, whereas the parks and open space areas are kept in a largely natural state. The public was duly notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on May 16th and 23rd, and six postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on May 17th. To my knowledge, staff has not received any public comments regarding this request. The request was evaluated according to standards contained in the Comprehensive Plan Code of Ordinances and relevant state law. The applicant has requested a waiver from subdivision requirements for minimum lot area requirements for lots one and two. The two lots are under the 7,000 square foot minimum lot area requirement for the CA Commercial Zoning District. The applicant has noted that portions of the underlying parcel are unbuildable due to grade changes and floodway constraints, which limit the available space for individual lots. City of Bismarck staff find that this justification is valid. All additional dimensional standard requirements have been met. The creation of any new lots in the City of Bismarck is subject to development capital charges for municipal utilities. The underlying parcel is currently, or is vested for two-inch meter capacity. The plating action would require that each of the nine commercial lots be vested at a two-inch capacity. However, a previously approved site plan for this parcel indicated that each building lot would be, would require a three-quarter inch meter. The city has discussed entering into a development agreement with the owner, stating that each lot would have a three-quarter inch vesting instead of the two-inch vesting, as would typically be required. The resulting capital charge resulting from this update would be due prior to recordation of the plat, along with a signed development agreement. This plating action and development agreement would supersede the requirement in the site plan approval letter for when the utility capital charge payment would be due. As a result of all findings contained in the staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed minor subdivision final plat would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare as consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Code of Ordinances and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the minor subdivision final plat for Meadowlark Commercial 11th Edition, including granting a subdivision waiver to allow reduced lot areas for lots one and two, with the condition that a signed development agreement for utility capital charge payment will be due prior to recordation of the plat. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren? I'm not seeing or hearing any Lauren, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and with that, I will open the public hearing, and I would ask for either the owner or representative, and Landon is stepping up, so please proceed, Landon.
Thank you Chair Schwartz. Yes, Landon Amler, Swenson Ag Engineering, representing ABG Holdings in this. Yeah, this is a project I think you're seeing a little bit more of, you've seen a couple of them lately, where we're getting these larger commercial lots, and then people want to break them down and sell off these smaller office buildings, commercial buildings, things like that, and then just do sort of shared utilities, shared parking areas, shared paving, things like that. It's another opportunity to do so, it's in a commercially zoned area, that part is already in place. We did ask for a waiver concerning a couple of the lots that became substandard size. About a third of the lot is basically unbuildable due to some floodway issues, and then in addition to that, probably another, almost up to half of the lot is unbuildable just because of a steep slope on the east side of this. If anybody's been up in the area, you'll see the slope there. It's part of the reason that the trail for the Parks District is actually on the west side of the property rather than down in that area. So that's what we're asking for here tonight, but I can answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Landon? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Landon, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing anybody stepping up. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Lauren, do you have any additional comments?
No additional comments.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a minor plat, and staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. What are your wishes?
Move to approve with conditions.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wangan.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Zent. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we will move on to Item G on our regular agenda, which is Southland 3rd Edition. And Isaac is going to present us with staff briefing.
Yes, thank you again Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. So this next regular agenda item comes to us from Sattler Homes, Inc., who is requesting approval of some revisions to the minor subdivision final plat titled Southland 3rd Edition, and a zoning map amendment from the RM 15 residential district to the PUD planned unit development. So if you're feeling any deja vu, we did see this at your meeting last month, but they're requesting some revisions, which I'll detail in a second after some general background information, just to make sure we're all still on the same page. So as you can see on the screens before you, this project is located in south Bismarck, east of South Washington Street, on the west of Peachtree Drive, and on the south side of Santa Fe Avenue there. The project still consists of about 5.87 acres, and the proposed change would go from the existing seven lots in one block to a proposed 28 lots in one block as part of the replat. The PUD request comes from a request from the applicant to facilitate some single-family home development on lots that are of a size and width that are below the existing dimensional standards for R5 or R10 residential districts. And as you can see on the screens there now, the surrounding land to the north, east, and south is a variety of different kinds of residentially zoned land, and then to the west there, we have some partially developed commercial land as well. And the future land use plan calls this area to be neighborhood mixed use, which are generally described as areas for social and commercial gathering spaces for the immediate surrounding residential areas. So previously, the public was notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on April 11th and 18th, and 41 postcards were mailed to owners of nearby properties on April 11th, 2025 as well. And at the conclusion of your hearing on April 23rd, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of this plat and zoning change with the condition that the developer enter a utility agreement with the city. So then, after the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with that condition, but before the City Commission considered this item, the applicant requested some changes to the, to some easements on the plat, which we'll see in a second here, in order to navigate and minimize some conflicts with other different utilities in the area. So as you can see on the screens there, they wanted to shift a water and sewer easement from the east side of some lots there to the west side of those lots, extended an easement on the east side of the plat, a little further to the south. And then, all of those highlighted easements, they proposed reducing the width of them from 23 feet to 22 feet. In addition to this, they then wanted to reduce the proposed minimum front yard setback from 23 feet to 22 feet as well. So as a matter of procedure, this is coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission so that the version the City Commission will ultimately see is the same as the version the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of. That way, we don't run into issues of, you know, one commission voting for something that technically was not recommended approval of by this board. So that's the reason that it's coming back here today. And then, the public was notified again of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on May 16th and 23rd, and an additional 41 postcards were mailed to owners of nearby properties on May 17th of 2025. To my knowledge, staff has not received any written comments or additional inquiries regarding this request in between that hearing and this one. And as a result of all the findings contained in the staff report before you, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed revisions to the minor subdivision final plat and accompanying zoning map amendment would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and that they are still... welfare, and that they are still generally consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the revisions of the minor subdivision final plat titled Southland Third Edition, as well as approval of the zoning map amendment from the RM15 Residential District to the planned unit development, with the previously placed condition that a utility agreement between the city and the developer is accepted prior to recordation of the plat. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Isaac. Thank you. With that, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing and ask either the owner or a representative to step to the podium.
Thank you again, Chair Schwartz. Yes, representing Sattler Homes on this one. Yeah, what we're looking for here basically is, conceptually, we're staying the same as what we were last month, just made some adjustments to easement locations, also reduced that front yard setback a little bit. Since those projects, we're trying to make an attempt to get reasonable housing, affordable housing in the city, which is becoming more and more difficult. So what we've done is shrink the lots on a little bit, shrink some of those setbacks down, and hopefully we can achieve that with this project. If I can answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, question for Landon. Commissioner Shell?
I asked it last month. I'll ask it again, Landon, just to confirm the developers finds that utility agreement is a satisfactory condition to be placed on this approval?
Commissioner Shell, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions? I'm not seeing any, Landon.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody stepping up. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Isaac, any additional comments?
None at this time, Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a minor plat and a zoning map amendment, and both staff recommends approval with conditions. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve with conditions on both.
A motion from Commissioner Zent to approve with conditions.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Seavock. Any additional discussion, Commissioners? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.